Got it. Thank you. It's a pain in the balls. Good afternoon, everybody. This is the town of Dewey Beach, Mutley Town Council Public Hearing Meeting, as well as an executive session afterwards. It's being held at the Dewey Beach Lifesaving Station as well via Zoom. Today is Friday, April 12, 2024, and it's 3:30 PM. With that, I'd like to convene the town commissioners meeting, start with the opening ceremonies with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America. To the public.
Thank you, everybody. We'll start with the roll call. Commissioner Bauer.
Present remotely.
Commissioner Gibbons.
Here.
Commissioner Juzinski.
Here.
Commissioner Persinger.
Here.
And Mayor William Stevens is also here. We also have our chief, town manager, and council up at the front. Obviously, we have enough for a forum with all our various rules. With that, can I have a motion for an adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Paul?
Aye.
Okay. Committee reports. Commissioner Persinger.
The Charter and Code Review Committee met earlier this week. I think it was Wednesday, if today is Friday. And they have some recommendations that came out of that meeting related to building permits and trying to make the process a little more efficient. Talking about a threshold level at which you would begin to need a building permit, and below that, you would not need to get a building permit. I'm not sure that's entirely feasible. We have to talk that through. The recommendation in that area is very broad. It's going to come back to us, and we're going to have to wrestle with it. And hopefully, we'll be able to put together some sort of a initial proposal to handle this area that we'll come back to and talk about, and then come to some resolution. There was also a proposal related to swimming pools, and the placement of swimming pools and the size of swimming pools. And that, because of where it appears in the code, it's going to have to go through planning and zoning. So there'll be some more work on that before it gets back to us. I think that's it with respect to Charter and Code. The newly constituted Climate Change Committee is scheduled to meet tomorrow morning at 9:00. So looking forward to getting that committee going again and getting them chewing on some difficult issues in that area. That's all I have.
Great. Are you still thinking about having a Charter and Code workshop?
I am thinking about it.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Gibbons.
The Investment Committee met last night, and the Brown Advisory Report was posted on the town website. Everybody can review in detail. The high picture is that the Beech replenishment Long Term Fund is up and exceeding benchmark. The general fund, which is short, in response to commissioners' concerns and questions, they have rebalanced within the past quarter with a stronger focus on cash and T-bills within that portfolio. Our advisor expects ongoing rocky market with global conflicts, the election cycle, the impact of inflation, and of AI. We are in need of a chair and maybe thinking about how to reorganize to make that work.
One of the things that I think came out of also the investment meeting is Dominic, who works for Brown Advisory, will be presenting some recommendations to us, given the risks they see going forward with the global economics, the interest rates, as well as the upcoming elections. Commissioner Juzinski.
Infrastructure did not meet. But I want the town manager to be able to give an update because there's so much good news that came into the town, and you worked very hard on that. So I'd rather you kind of go through the good news we have and the impact on the current future projects out of the sudden.
If it's okay if I could provide that during my comments?
That's what I meant.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Bauer.
Marketing Committee, Dewey and Bloom is coming along rapidly. Looks like we have 28 planners coming into town. They should be delivered, I don't know, about what, a week and a half, something like that? And then our planning day is scheduled for May 4th, so we need some volunteers. You know, hopefully, a lot of people are watching this and spread it around to all our friends here to, you know, if we can get some people to come out that day, it makes everybody's job easier. We have to buy some stuff to maintain these things afterwards. So the good news is, we raised, Kate, I don't know what the final number was, but it was probably around 20,000 in donations, which was incredible. We exceeded our expectations. Going into this, we thought we'd have 17 planners, but getting up to 20 is pretty amazing, or 28 is pretty amazing. But anyway, so we're coming along. So if we can get some volunteers together, that's the next step there. Budget and finance, we're done for a while. So there's nothing to talk about at this time unless anything gets referred back to us.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Bauer.
That's it.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the March 15, 2024, meeting minutes. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Bauer. Any comments, changes? Not seeing any. All in favor, say aye.
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 Next up is the town manager update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So paving project being done by Del Dot here in the town of Dewey Beach on the 19 Streets out of the 23 in town. It's been pushed back again because of the bad weather. Alan Myers is currently working on a project down at Bethany Beach, and the amount of rain we've had keeps pushing that back. So they said earlier this week, they thought the 15th, but today I got a call from Del Dot, and they said it might not start till the 19th. They asked me if they could go past May 3 to May 10. I said yes, but there's a hard stop on May 10 because we have parking starting on the 15th. And we don't want folks paying for parking, coming in, and here we are paving streets and telling them they can't park on certain streets. So there's going to be more to follow on that. They are going to start up on the second block of Chesapeake and then work their way south. And whatever they get done, they get done. And what they don't get done, they're going to come back after Labor Day and continue to finish the project. Again, this is a Del Dot project for the Del Dot Streets in Dewey Beach. Lifeguard tryouts, we had about 30 lifeguards try out for about 10 positions. Great turnout this year. Captain Richmond did a nice job Saturday, the 27th. We have the Doodles in town on McKinley Street. It's always a big affair with all the dogs down on the beach. Just a reminder, we will not be selling any parking tags of any kind for boat trailers or any type of trailers in town this year. It's against the town code to have that. So there will be no permits sold for trailers or boat trailers. Pump station down on Baird Avenue. Really good job done by Harry Caswell's group. You know, originally, it was approved Remington and Verdict back last year for just under $10,000. Harry Caswell group came in. Remington and Verdict didn't come through with a contractor. Their contractor fell through. Harry Caswell did the work for about $6,000. We saved $3,800 on the work. So, and he did a really nice job. As Commissioner Bauer said, the Bloom's going very good, the Bloom project. Hats off to Pat Gancy, to Kate, and the Commissioner Bauer for doing all that work. Reminder, our front office at Town Hall has opened up now. The new hours are from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then when we get closer to summer, we'll stay open to 6:00 on Friday nights, and we'll also be open on the weekends once we get into summer. Reed Street, Bayside. So Remington and Verdict originally thought they'd be out there in March. They're not. They thought they'd be out there this past Monday. They haven't. They thought they'd be there today, but because of the weather, they postponed their work on the flaps until Monday. So they're supposed to be down there Monday, starting the project on the stormwater flaps on the Bayside. Good news is Senator Coon's office, we applied for that grant. It's a million-dollar grant to work on flooding. I called it the Route 1 Flooding Project because when the flooding water comes up, Reed, Rodney, or Dickerson Street, it does close Route 1 and causes huge issues for people trying to get down to Bethany Beach in emergency vehicles. So that's a project with the Army Corps of Engineers. I called the Army Corps of Engineers, spoke with them. They hadn't even received the official notice yet from Senator Coon's office. The individual I talked to said it's a process. They'll send us paperwork, we'll fill out the paperwork. The money will sit with the Army Corps of Engineer. We'll work with them on the project for mainly Reed Street, some type of small pump station there. Has to be approved by them and Denrec, and then we can move forward and put it out for bid. So that's the Reed Street. If you have anything else on that, Commissioner?
Oh, no. It's just great news.
Yeah. Okay, since this year, since January to April 10, if you looked at last year, January to April 10 of 2023, we received about 7.4 inches of rain. This year, we have over 15 inches of rain. It's an increase of 7 inches of rain. And I only bring that up because a lot of the streets in the North End, a good number of them, we're getting big puddles down there. And what I did was I walked around town earlier this week. I just took some pictures. So what I wanted to illustrate was just something for the commissioners to think about. So here, we've got a house. You've got the larger house to the left, and you've got a smaller house on the right. And what's happening in the Northern End, all by code, they're following our town code. Bigger houses are being built. They're nice-looking houses. They're big houses. They're following our code. There's 15% of green space when they build these. But what's happening is there's so much space being taken up on these lots now with these new houses. There's not as much ground to absorb the water. So the water's running out because we have to slope the houses towards the street, and it's going out in the street. And a lot of our houses in the North End do not have storm drains. So this is something we're going to have to really think about. It's going to be an investment for the Infrastructure Committee to address this. And it's just something I'd like the commissioners to think about. If you could just look at some of the bigger houses that have been built up in the North End. You've got 313 there with a smaller house down to the far left. The next one, please, Kate. And then you've got the small house here and a bigger house there in the background. I just, they're beautiful homes. They're per code, but it's really causing some issues in the North End. Next. So this is some of the new gravel, some of the, for the kayak launch on the end of Reed Street. Next. Here's some of the work being done on Van Dyke Bayside. Since I've gotten here three years ago, these stormwater pipes on Van Dyke have been covered with sand. There's an agreement between us, Denrec, and DVE that DVE, Harvey Hannah, the Hyatt, will be responsible for all maintenance on those stormwater pipes that come out there. So they got their permission from the Army Corps and Denrec. It took them about a year to get it, and they were down there trying to dig out around that. That was earlier this week. Next, please. Moped parking. So we are, we've increased eight additional spots around town for moped parking. We will not be charging for it this year. One of the things we're going to have to do after they come back in and do the paving project, we're going to have to repaint these again, but at least we've got them identified now, and they're out there throughout the town. Next, please. So a really good thing, you know, our new landscaper's doing a great job putting mulch there in the Center Island. We're going to do some other flower projects also in front of Town Hall. Separate from Bloom, we're going to be putting some flowers in the beds in front of Town Hall. And then I'm looking at the Center Island, starting up there at Baird Avenue near Pfeiffer's, coming in. I talked to our landscaper about that, about maybe putting a bed in the future in those areas. I'd like to, at this time, go to Dawn, just for an update. Dawn Hanks.
Good afternoon. This morning, I went to a meeting over in Georgetown of all of the agencies that were involved with the Silver Lake Parcel that has been having a lot of fill brought in. That particular meeting was very pleasant this morning by the agencies. We got an update in respect that all of the information that you can read on the Cape Gazette is what the issues are at this particular time. The county has stated that this is, parcel is in the county, and they are monitoring the situation. They do not allow any more addition of fill, but they need to find out about the wetland situation as well as the flood zone and if anything, any place around the lake would be affected by this fill. If you see anyone out there, that most likely is the surveying engineering company that apparently has been hired by the property owner to be able to give it a proper analysis to the county and so that therefore the county can then assess what's going on and how to appropriately handle it. But all agencies were there, and everyone is involved.
Yeah, thanks, Dawn. I just thought it was important, since the number of emails that everybody's received. Jim, do you have anything for the 5G poles? Anything update?
Yeah, I do. Bill and I did have a discussion this morning with our, with CTC and Julie Estes, which is our liaison dealing with Verizon. We're still dealing with Collins Avenue. There's been some miscommunication as to whether they have to go through a formal review per our ordinance, or can they modify the ordinance? It was all, and modified the building permit, which was originally issued, which would move the pole within three feet of where the location would go right now with the proposed location. So we're dealing with that, and we hope to have it done before Memorial Day. But, you know, truthfully, it'd be a miracle if, it's been very slow getting them to move. We have discussed the other issue with Cullen Street, where the pole was moved in Arrow in front of one of the properties, and we're negotiating how that's going to work out to remove, to move that pole again. And CTC will more than likely have to pick up the tab on that one. So we're still working with that on that.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. And the last thing, Mayor, I'd just like to thank the staff. They've done a great job getting us ready for summer. Pending any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions for town manager? Okay. Chief?
Hello, everyone. We are gearing up for summer. We're preparing for our seasonal academy, which starts this month, actually, on the last two Saturdays of the month, and then we'll go into May. We've hired 11 seasonals so far, so we're looking for one more. And we have just recently offered a position to a lateral hire, which will give us our 12th police officer starting May 1st. So we're in good shape there. When I first came, we had nine, and then we had one injured. So that put us down to eight last summer. So going in the summer with 12, that's really good. We feel really good about that. Hopefully, we can get one more seasonal, and we'll be in great shape. We're gearing up. We have promotions tonight at the Hyatt at 6:00 for if anyone would like to join us there. Hope you have a great night. We have formed a committee with South Bethany, Fenwick, and Ocean View that I had passed on information before about. It was a police accountability committee that we were required by law to start. And our two representatives from the town are Claudia Rogers and Ed Kilma. The first meeting is April 24, from 10 to 12 at Ocean View. Everyone's welcome. It'll also be posted, it's going to be via Zoom as well for people that can only attend that way. We will be meeting probably four to six times a year. They're required to do training, but you'll see them in town doing ride-alongs. From each agency, they have to provide a minimum of two from their town, and we're going to discuss relative issues in each town, trying to make things better for everyone. And so we're excited about that. We have a great partnership going with that. And that's pretty much it. We're just gearing up for summer and getting ready.
Sounds great. Any questions for the chief? At this point in time, I'll open the floor to anybody who has any public comment for non-agenda items. If anybody's here that would like to speak on any non-agenda items or in the waiting room, Kate? There we go. All right. All in favor? All right. With that, I'd like to open a public hearing. Public hearing regarding ordinance to rezone tax map parcel 334-20.14-205.00, located at 24 Houston Street or Houston Street, Dewey Beach, from resort business to RB2 to resort residential, RR, and to amend the comprehensive map accordingly as referred by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll ask if anyone here who's for this rezoning would like to come up and also make comments. I saw that Mr.,
The applicant is here.
The applicant, Mr. Thomas, is here.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I'm remote. I was planning on next Friday, and when I moved back, I couldn't change the trip I had planned. So sorry that I'm remote.
No worries. Did you have any additional comments before we open up for any public comment?
Yeah, I can just give the same background before. So first, I'll start by thanking the town. Fred and Jim Deedee's have been great through this process, and can't say that about every town. So we appreciate all the time and effort. It's been a fair process and always responsive to our questions. You know, thanks to the town manager and the chief for the safety in the town as well. And thanks to all the commissioners for your dedicated service to community and note to volunteer basis, and we really appreciate it. So I'll start with, you know, background on the parcel. And then number two, explain why we believe the rezoning is appropriate and consistent with the code and the comprehensive plan. Give a brief explanation of the desired end result, and then just talk about any other questions that you may have. So by way of background, as I think all of you know, we were here back in January. We had unanimous approval to go to Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and zoning approved it unanimously on March 1st to send it back to the commissioners. So we're seeking the rezoning in connection pursuant to Code Section 185-3 and 185-73, and also believe it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. So a little bit of background about 24 Houston Street. Former Mayor Cook told me it was Houston, not Houston. So I'll stick with that. He told me that at the P&amp;Z meeting. But the Siesta was built in 1961. It has 30 units. It sits on a 100 by, excuse me, 150 by 100-foot lot. It's currently zoned RB2. We're seeking to change the zoning to RR and switch it to 350 by 100 lots that would be facing Houston Street. There would be no curb cut or opening on Route 1. So all the driveways would face Houston Street. The hotel is sort of on its, you know, last leg without substantial improvements. We initially, a couple of us had thought about a hotel project there, and it's just not feasible, really can't be done. And the building wouldn't conform to the current code and RB2 designation. We believe the zoning is consistent with 185-3 for the following reasons. And for those of you who have the materials, 185-3 is in Tab 2 of the materials. But about halfway down that code section talks about the purpose of the chapter and why it was adopted. And it says, quote, "lessen congestion in the streets to secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers. Promote health and general welfare to provide adequate light and air and to prevent overcrowding of land." So the reasons we think this is appropriate within the meaning of that code section, number one, we think it's more consistent with the character of the zoning district. So Houston Street sits adjacent to the NR District on the North End that the town manager was just showing pictures of. And all of that is own, you know, zoned NR. This is the only neighboring property outside, east of Maui, that's sort of in the middle, that's adjacent to the NR District that is not zoned RR. So the other side of Houston Street, as reflected on, in Tab 4, where we have the zoning map, you can see the other side of Houston Street is zoned RR like we're seeking here. So this is the only RB2 adjacent to the NR District, and we think an RR designation would be more consistent with the character of the zoning district. Number two, we think this is consistent with 185-3 for the following reasons. Number one, it would certainly lessen congestion in the streets. With 30 units, we're seeking to instead go to three single-family homes consistent with an RR designation. Two, secure safety from future dangers. Again, the hotel is, you know, on its last leg. It needs, it needs a substantial repair if it's, you know, going to last in the future. It had a recent damage to its roof deck done to the extent it's not even usable anymore. So to avoid a situation like we had on Van Dyke, it's, you know, it's appropriate to rezone this and secure safety from future dangers. Number three, we think it'll promote the health and general welfare of the community for same reasons I just mentioned, just given the property's reached, or the building has reached its useful life. And then four, it'll certainly prevent the overcrowding of land. You know, that's the entry point to the North End from town. It's, the road divides there right in front of the Houston, right in front of the hotel. That curb cut that's there now, where there's folks coming in and out of the parking lot, would be removed and provide certainly greater safety and lessen congestion there. As far as the comprehensive plan, I would just like to run you through, particularly for the record, of why we believe that the rezoning would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So I have some specific sites to the comprehensive plan. On page 54 of the comprehensive plan, where this talks about redevelopment, says, "Town of Dewey Beach position on redevelopment is to ameliorate existing conditions upon parcels throughout the municipality that are characterized by blight or underutilization, and that in the current state without intervention would present a detriment to the town's public health, safety, and welfare. Redevelopment should contribute to the town's overall attraction as a vibrant place to live, work, play, and recreate." And then it's the objective of that section cites, "When feasible, redevelop available, underutilized, and/or blighted parcels with a variety of uses that are compatible with the surrounding uses in the terms of scale, character, use, and density." So we certainly think three single-family homes adjacent to the town's NR District and adjacent to all other, all the other parcels surrounding it are residential homes. We think that certainly fits within the objective of redevelopment, certainly a blighted parcel in its current state. Next, on page 58 of the comprehensive plan regarding transportation, it's generally promoting safety on Route 1 and pedestrian and bicycle, and pedestrian and bicycle access. This is going to remove a curb cut to Route 1. Again, this is right where the road splits to go into the residential NR District. It'll, you know, result in less crowding at that, you know, at that corner there. So we'll certainly promote more safety on Route 1 consistent with the comprehensive plan. Turning to page 78 of the comprehensive plan, so the overcrowding section. And the objective there is to respect and maintain the character of the local community. Objective is considering enacting policies that encourage suitable residential development and counterbalance overcrowding by encouraging sustainable tourism. So we think this is certainly encouraging suitable residential development consistent with the area. Next, existing land use. This is on page 51. Says, "Ensure future buildings are properly proportioned and fit within the existing character of the town. We think three single-family homes certainly fit and are more properly proportioned to their neighboring properties." Page, I only have two more. Page 30, this is planning objectives rated to critical community development challenges. So partner with Del Dot, Denrec, property owners and businesses to protect against overcrowding through the promotion of sustainable tourism. So again, we think this is going to certainly reduce overcrowding on that North End. And then last, page 44, Section 3.7, Housing. Establish a zoning code that permits residential redevelopment. And this is certainly facilitating, you know, residential redevelopment on the North End. Just a couple other things I would mention. We went through the State Plus process. And again, thanks to Jim Deedee for his participation from the town. As to our zoning requests, no state agency had any comments or objections, and it was approved on that basis. I think Jim can speak to the comprehensive plan adjustment. Received no comments or objections either. I'll just address one other item, just because it was brought up both at the last meeting and at the P&amp;Z by one of the other town residents. And their comment was that the commissioners should not allow this because it's, quote, "spot zoning." So I pulled down the case law on spot zoning, and I would point the commissioners to the McQuail case. I'm happy to share this with Fred. This is a quote from the case, and it defines what spot zoning is. And it says, "Spot zoning is generally defined as an attempt to wrench a small lot or a small area from its environment and give it a new rating that disturbs the tenor of the community." So that would be like, you know, taking a spot on Cullen Street, reaching it from NR to RB2, you know, wrenching. You know, maybe somebody thought they could have a lemonade stand that'll do well in that NR District. This is, this is, that's not what's happening here. You're taking a small area and giving it a rating that doesn't disturb the tenor of the community. It actually fits better within the tenor of the community. More importantly, there's a recent decision, and this is the Kane case. It's from 2020. It's out of our Delaware Court of Chancery. And, you know, someone attempted to knock down a zoning where it's on the basis of spot zoning. And this is a quote from the court. "Notably, my research indicates that spot zoning has never been employed to invalidate a zoning ordinance in Delaware." So I think it's a flawed position to even be arguing that. It's not spot zoning. It also couldn't be used to shut down this zoning ordinance. That's not the test. The test is consistency with the comprehensive plan. And I've just demonstrated, I believe that this rezoning would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So I'll stop with that. And again, I thank everyone for their participation and the flexibility in allowing me to do this via Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. And that was a comprehensive review of the, of the, of the, your objectives here. So thank you for your time. Last, is there anyone here that would like to come up and to address if there's any public comment issues concerning this rezoning, rezoning? Not seeing any, anyone online, Kate? Uh, commissioners, anything for, for Mr. Thomas? I keep having a look at your names. I want to call you Mr. Vincent. Um, you and I have the same problem with two first names.
You can call me anything you want, Mr. Mayor. Don't call me late for dinner.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Thomas? Okay, um, with that, I'd like to close the public hearing and move into action item number one, which is to discuss a possible voting ordinance to rezone tax map parcel three, three, four, dash, two, zero, point, one, four, dash, two, oh, five, point, zero, zero, located at twenty-four Houston Street. Um, Dewey Beach from Resort Business Two, RB two to Resort Residential RR and to amend the comprehensive plan map quarterling. Um, I think Mr. Thomas did a, a very good job of all the process and as well as this going bound and planning and zoning it back. Um, so I'll open it up for motion and conversation.
I, I move that we approve the request to rezone this property and amend the, um, comprehensive plan accordingly.
Second. Before we agree, can we, can we get Mr. Um, Mr. Thomas to join Charter and Code because of?
I, I think it would be a welcome addition.
That's a condition that, uh, oh, he's laughing. All right, I'm not getting any further. All right.
Oh, um, before we call for a vote, this is a rezoning, um, and therefore this requires us to vote individually and to support our vote with specific reasons, uh, as opposed to just a voice vote.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Barrett.
Yeah, do we need public comment on this? Is there anybody weighing in on this before we?
We already guys have a comment through the, um, public hearing, but.
I, I did have a question. It just occurred to me. Is there a plan to operate this, this, um, property as a hotel for another year? I, I thought I remembered that being part of the, uh, discussion.
A good question and thank you for it. We're uncertain right now. There's a, there's a chance we, we may not be, uh, and, and may look to see if we can, um, that was the original intention, uh, let me take a step back. That was certainly the original intention, uh, and continue to be this, the seller has decided not to open it, which we're in discussions with them, um, over some contract things. So the, the problem with opening now from being fully transparent is we may not close the transaction until we finish the rest of our diligence, which would have us closing the first week of June. Um, and it will be behind the gun if the seller hasn't opened the property. So we may have to, um, taking it down if we can't get that shifted. We're, we're actively working on it. I actually was emailing, uh, the sellers of council immediately before this. So I didn't want to, we may, I don't want to misrepresent them. I'm just trying to be fully transparent with the, with the town.
You talk about considers the effective date of the?
Yeah, that, that's my question. Yeah.
Yeah, if we can have the effective date, um, I guess the question is, I don't know what the rules are as far as, um, demolishing it in the summer if, if we can't get it opened. But I assume the, the, the patient, the designation of the zoning would not impact the, the permit necessary to take it down. So if we could have the optionality, because we're still trying to work to have it open, uh, maybe just make it effective October first. But I defer to, I have two partners in the room who are more, uh, building experts than me. But it would seem that October first might be, um, sufficient.
Is there any opposition to an, to an effective date of ten, one on the conversion? Okay.
No issue here.
Okay.
So it'd be appropriate for me to amend my motion so that the effective date would be, um, October one for, for this, in granting this, uh, rezoning.
And a second?
Second.
Second. Um, and Commissioner Barrett, did you hear counsel? That's the, that this isn't just a vote of yay to a vote of yes and why?
Yes. Yeah, I'd like to, I'll vote yes on this and the reason being, I mean, obviously the building is very old and, uh, it's, uh, it's seen its better days. And, you know, as much as so many people don't like change, there's, you know, change is natural and it has to occur. Uh, I think it's fitting for the zoning district and, uh, you know, my vote is affirmative. So I'm a yes.
Commissioner Juzinski.
Um, Resort Residential, uh, fits the location actually better than Resort Business. So, uh, the change in the conference, the plan makes sense as does the rezoning request.
Commissioner Gibbons.
Um, I support, um, ending the comprehensive ma- map and rezoning this property. I think that it will, um, make safer a different type, um, stretch of coastal highway by not having access straight out onto coastal highway with the rezoning.
Commissioner Persimore.
Uh, yeah, I vote yes. The, um, I think the applicant has well justified the application. And, uh, the rezoned property is certainly consistent with contiguous properties in that area.
Uh, and I also vote yes, uh, with the congestion, with the issues with many cars coming in and off of Route one. Uh, and as well as that, I believe because it's adjacent to all the other resort residential, I think it's a good change. So that is unanimous with decisions.
All right, very good. Do you guys want to stay or do you want to let go?
Could I just add one question as the, and if the case kind of could be answered? If we, if we can't open it, um, because it's outside of our control, would that, would the, assuming it's allowed to be taken down in the summer, which I don't know the answer, but assuming it was, I'm assuming the effectiveness of the rezoning has no impact on ability to take it down. And I'm just asking that to whether we should change the?
Okay, Fred. So I, I don't know the answer to the, the question as to whether or not there's a season or the summer season is not appropriate for demolition. That's going to, we're going to need to take a, a look at that. But I don't think that there would be any prohibition between, uh, um, or any impact of the zoning change on whether or not the property could be demolished. So, so a permit to demolish, if it can be granted after May fifteenth or, or, you know, during the summer, if it can be granted, then the nature of the zone won't have any impact on whether or not you can go ahead and, and demolish. The, um, the, the issue would, would be in terms of pulling a building permit. So you won't be able to pull a building permit to recon, or redevelop the site as a residential property if the effective date of the zoning change is October. Um, so you wouldn't be able to pull your permit until sometime in October.
But what they could do, correct me if I'm wrong, Fred, if they did come back to council with a plan because they could go through the process and ask for the amendment to have it sooner, it could, or is it locked into October first?
Well, that's what we voted on just now.
Right, yeah.
I thought there was no building between May fifteenth and September fifteenth.
No.
Is this Dawn know the answer or Jim know the answer to that? I mean, typically you can build, which with the, the prohibition that I'm aware of in some other local municipalities is from May fifteenth until September fifteenth, there's no demo.
No pile drives, pile drivers.
No.
Okay, no pile.
You can demolition, but you can't pile drive.
Okay, so that's the, and is that between May fifteenth and September fifteenth? So do?
Correct.
Okay, and then on the permit, are you still permitted to submit the permit and just not pull it? Can we submit the application in the summer and pull it ten, one?
Which permit are we talking about?
For the new, for the new homes to be built on the three lots.
Yeah, I think you could submit it and go and probably, um, you know, conduct meetings with, with the, um, with the building official. But, uh, I don't think the permit can be issued until the zoning change is effective.
All right. Are we good? Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, is the, the two partners in the room, is that good? Sorry.
Can you come on up, state your name, so be as official as you want. And your, your partner's the one that threw you under the bus, not me.
As a reason, Vince speaks. If we can demo, I'm Paul Perna, Paul Partners. If we can demo in the summer, and I guess I don't want to speak out of turn because Vince is working on some things right now, contract related. We had discussed that if it can't open, if, if we can't get it open, that would give us more time in the summer to, there's a lot of things there can go to habitat, to humanity. You know, air conditioning units, a lot, it gives, and it takes time to get that done. I've been through it a couple of times and chose not to do it because I didn't have the time. Um, but it would give us some time and it'd be nice if we could get, if we end up not being able, not opening, if we could continue to move forward with getting the place emptied out. Get it, getting it emptied out and then getting us demoed. Demo is only going to take a week or less. And then it's a clean site. And it'd be nice if we could be applying for, right now, we just have one home that we know that we're going to build. We're looking to put some drawings together for the other two. If we could, and you may have answered that question, if we could submit for permitting and get, and go through the approval process and be ready to go after Labor Day. Typically what I do after Labor Day, I'm using the process. What I do, one is demo, build and try and be ready for the next season. So that, the October one kind of struck me. But again, I, I didn't want to talk out of turn. If, if, if we can get it cleaned out and do what we can to donate as much as we can and get it demoed, that would be great. And then we go through the permitting process for the home, ready to go after Labor Day.
Sorry to interrupt. Can I just ask, wait, um, if we, is there a possibility to just make it effective immediately? I don't, and, and then we can operate as a non-conforming use until October?
No, no, that is not, yeah, that would be an option. You could be legal non-conforming if your use predates the, the zoning change. But once we change the zoning, you're going to have to operate in accordance with the zoning.
Okay.
Okay, construction pile driving and demolition limitations shall not be performed between.
It's under C, I think.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Well, you got part of what you wanted, which was the rezoning and the comprehensive plan changed. Um, and obviously at work with Dawn and Jim, you know, whatever we can do to help as you guys move through the process. But we have limitations associated with the, um.
Yeah, so demolition is not permitted, um, except for between the month September. Uh, actually it's September sixteenth through May fourteenth. So once we get to May fourteenth of this year, we cannot.
Jim is making faces.
Jim, we can't hear you.
May I make a suggestion?
I'm not applying to demo.
Well, you guys can guide.
Wait a minute.
They can guide you. We don't need to spend more time on this in terms of what you can and can't do basically.
And that, that's fine. It always.
Great, thank you.
Well, is it, can we, I just wanted to know for the purposes of the effective date. So we can't, I, I thought Dawn was going to say we could demolish, but.
According to the code, demolition is allowed year round. It's not allowed on Saturdays. Pile driving is restricted during the tourist season from May through September. However, whenever I receive a set of building plans, I must review those plans according to the zoning district that that particular structure is located in. And so if this particular rezoning does not take effective until, um, October the first, it would be of course at that time is when I could have reviewed it and said, oh, their plans are wonderful and so forth. And we could proceed on to there. Up until that time, everything that you would submit, single family home wise, would be as a consultation. And I could not approve any of those plans until the rezoning is allowed.
So with that, it sounds like you have to decide if you're going hotel possibility and then we keep October first.
Well, we already.
We wrote it and we cannot.
Yeah, we already voted on based upon the request on October first.
Okay.
But I, I think what, please work with the town hall in terms of what you can do and within code. So thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
All right, number two, discuss a possible vote on resolution to recommend the nomination in term of service of the alderman of the town of Dewey Beach. Um, just as a background, our alderman, uh, prior alderman had resigned, uh, about a month ago. Town manager, is that correct?
Two months ago.
About two months ago now. Um, we went through an extensive process of interviewing, uh, candidates, qualified candidates. Um, and, uh, and have, from a, from a town manager, town hall perspective, have identified a candidate that we would like to push forward for. Do you have anything else you want to say, Bill?
So, um, Ms. Reed or? McIntyre, she's recently, uh, got married. Has been, has been with the JP courts over twenty years here in the state of Delaware. Uh, the three years that I've been here since she's been hired by the town as a, as a clerk of the court. She is a, an excellent employee. She is a team player and in a small environment like our town, that is so important that you get along with everybody and you communicate well. And she does all those.
So we're putting the recommendation of Mrs. McIntyre, uh, as our, as a new alderman to the board. Any questions? Anyone here from the public to make comment?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome forward, full time.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Um, three, discuss a possible vote to nominate the Dewey Beach Volunteer of the Year to be awarded by the Rehoboth Dewey Chamber of Commerce. Town manager?
Sorry, sir.
It's okay. It's all right. It's for the volunteer of the year.
Yes, so we looked at many different, uh, individuals that volunteer a lot of different ti- uh, time, their own personal time around town. Dave Lyons has done an excellent job, um, being on two committees on, um, Charter and Code. He's stepped in and he's taken that, that committee, which sometimes can go off of track. It can be very in-depth sometime. Uh, he does a lot of, um, groundwork before the meeting, coordinating with myself and with, and with Dawn. And he's also on, uh, Planning and Zoning, which is another very important, uh, committee for the town. He's done an excellent job, uh, on both those committees. He spends a lot of his own personal time, uh, helping the town out on both those committees. So I would recommend Dave Lyons, uh, for that war.
Any questions of council? Not seeing any, any public comment? Not seeing any, may I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second. All in favor?
I was going to say the whole thing. Second, third, fourth.
Want to say the whole thing?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I move that we nominate, uh, Dave Lyons as Dewey Beach Volunteer of the Year.
And you have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Lyons. Um, discuss a possible vote on the following committee reappointments. Uh, A, Jimmy O'Connor to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term of three years. B, Riccardi to the Board of Adjustments for a term of three years. C, Dave Vogt to the Board of Adjustments for a term of three years. And D, Dave, Dave Vogt to the Audit Committee for a term of one year. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any conversation? Not seeing any, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, discuss the progress regarding the new town hall and police station project. Town manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, this process has started about two years ago. Um, since then, we've worked very hard with GMB to come up with a, a building that would support the needs of the town, uh, the needs of our, our employees and also looking at, uh, future growth. With the lots that we have, the lot out, the two lots that are out of Route one and the current lot that we are in, this is going to be a two-phase project. One would be once everything's approved and, um, uh, representative from GMB will go into that. Uh, will be to, um, knock down the, uh, parking enforcement building first, build our police station and town hall there. Once that's established, we will move into that building and then knock down the current police station and town hall. And then build the, the second building, which will house, uh, a Sallyport EMS, uh, in, in that building. So it, it's a good plan going forward. Um, I think we need to get an update from GMB of where we are right now. Uh, so with that, I'd ask GMB to do the update. Morgan?
Mr. Elrich.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me. Um, excuse me if, um, you hear me coughing a little bit, um, throughout this. Um, Bill asked me to join you today just to give you some background on kind of where we are now. So I tried to pull a little bit of a timeline together, some of which you may already know. Um, originally, the preliminary correspondence between the town's, um, consultant CSI, which is Dave Naples, and the state fire marshal's office occurred at the end of July and the beginning of August with Dwayne Fox, which is the state fire marshal's office. At that time, it was determined to use the twenty-five percent fire lane access and fifty percent perimeter access. And that was based off of the three-story business occupancy with the detention and court, and correctional functions as well. Um, then around October nineteenth, uh, the town of Dewey began negotiations with DPL to. Then around October 19th, the town of Dewey began negotiations with DPL to bury the overhead power lines fronting the property along coastal highway. It was determined in early, mid-November of '23 that the town would not pursue this option, provided it would cost too much money to remove and relocate. Then, we held a 60% meeting on December 20th, '23 with the State Fire Marshal's Office. The gentleman's name that we met with was Jeff Siri. We met with him to discuss both the building design that was finalized with, from the schematic design, as well as the site. And that, again, was based off of using coastal highway for the fire lane access for the bulk of the required 25% fire lane requirement. At that time, the Fire Marshal's Office did not take any exception to our plan or path forward. We also sent them meeting minutes of that meeting, which were not objected to. So, therefore, we pushed forward with the design and the civil submitted their site plan fire marshal submission on January 26, '24. And it was reviewed by Rodney Marvel and returned comments on February 8. That is when we subsequently got a phone call from Dwayne Fox and Rodney Marvel on that same day stating that they would not allow the fire lane to be on Route 1 because of the high tension wires, the electrical wires running across the property. So, we had a subsequent meeting with Dwayne Fox, David Naples, GMB, and the town to discuss the path forward. There is a portion of the Delaware State Fire Regulations that state that as long as you have an unobstructed height of 13 foot 6 from any obstruction, that is, that the fire lane access should be acceptable. However, that's up to their jurisdiction. So, Dwayne Fox is saying that they're not going to accept that. So, we are stuck with a design that basically does not have 25% fire lane access because we were planning on using Route 1. We believe we did our due diligence to make sure that that was acceptable before we, you know, submitted the design. So, now, we talked with Dwayne Fox about submitting an alternate method of approval. Basically, that alternate method of approval means that you have to show items that are above and beyond code in other aspects of the project to mitigate the lack of the percentage of fire lane that we don't have since they're not allowing that fire, or the fire lane on, on coastal highway. So, we've drafted a letter. Most of those items on that list are already things that were incorporated into the design already, including non-combustible construction, which we already had in the design. Things like increasing the fire rating from one hour to two hour in between the town hall versus the EMS department. That is pretty much not a cost issue there. So, we plan to submit this, we drafted the letter in Senate to both Dave Naples and, and Bill for review and Jim as well with those items. There were several, several items that we planned to see if it's acceptable at the same time that we're submitting for fire marshal approval for the building, as well as we'll submit for the town for, for review for the building permit. The town has asked us to reduce our schedule that we've had all along by shaving off a month if possible to get this thing bid out in earlier. We were slated to be finished in mid-May. We're working towards trying to get this thing submitted early for the town at that request. So, the status of the civil permits, I'll just go through that quickly. Soil Conservation District approved a non-residential standard plan on the 23rd of February. That means we don't need to design a stormwater management practice since we have such a limited amount of additional impervious area on the proposed site compared to the existing. And we are also sending less runoff of the proposed analysis point to the existing catch basin on Route 1 in the proposed conditions as compared to the existing conditions. Del Dot approved the record plan with a low no or letter of no objection on 3/27/24. Del Dot is currently reviewing the entrance plans, planned drawings, which were required due to the frontage improvements that they require along Route 1, not because of a proposed entrance. Those comments are due back to us on 4/22 of '24, obviously, in the next couple of days. We will need to submit an office of drinking water permit. That'll be done at the same time that we submit for the building plan review, and we believe that that'll take about three to four weeks. We also reached out in, in February, excuse me, to the Delaware Accessibility Board because obviously this has a public component in early February. We have not heard back from them, but we obviously would plan to submit if they require a full submission as well at the same time that we submit for the building plan submission and the fire marshal plan submission. So, I believe that that's the status of where we are now, if anyone has any questions. For me.
Yeah. Thank you for the, for the review, Morgan. But one, one of the things I wanted to bring up is that I believe we did get a proposal to move the high-power lines, not bury them. Is that correct?
Yeah. So, the first proposal was $150,000, and that was to move one of the poles north, approximately 40 to 45 feet. I did ask how much it would be to bury the pole, the high-power lines, and they said it would be at least a million dollars to bury there.
Okay. Let me cross that out.
The other thing, the other thing I'd like to, you know, originally, originally, based on our February 8 meeting, we wanted this, originally to go out to bid February 16. That was the very first date that was proposed. And as we went into this, we knew that we may not get that. So, then we moved it to June 14. And then we reached a point sometime around January where we thought, you know, we're, we're at a good spot, where we should be. So, then we asked GMB to move it to May 15 of 2024, when it could go out to bid. And as Morgan has said, you know, Water Conservation has signed off on this. Del Dot is almost completely signed off on it. Our holdup right now may or may not be with the Fire Marshal's Office. Dave Naples from CSI and Morgan Keating, we've worked very hard to, to think about mitigation. She mentioned some of those things. They're gonna apply for the permit. I signed off on, on, on the town submission the other day with, with Morgan, and the letter should be going into the Fire Marshal's Office with, with the mitigation. So, it's gonna be up to the Fire Marshal to review it and, and see what they actually say to the mitigation levels that has been...
How do we mitigate the high-power lines and the 25-foot requirements for the fire lane?
In, in front on Route 1, you heard Morgan say, the, the code does say if there's no obstructed area with 13 and a half feet, it should be okay. But the Fire Marshal came back and said they weren't gonna accept that. Am I correct, Morgan?
Yes, sir.
I mean, you know, it's, it's one of those things where, you know, the Fire Marshal believes that, that would not be acceptable, even though...
The reason that they gave, sir, was something about their ladder trucks still having to go over those lines to get to the third floor of the design. So, he had a specific reason, and obviously, they have, you know, authority on whether they're gonna accept it or not. So, unfortunately, this was a little bit of a snag, and the fact that I feel like we all did our due diligence, including Dave Naples, GMB, as well as Bill, to make sure that our plan of attack was accepted by the Fire Marshal before we submitted it. But this, you know, as soon, you know, it seems to me that there were several reviewers before it got to Dwayne Fox, Jeff Siri, Rodney Marvel. So, they did not flag it. And then as soon as Dwayne saw it, that's when we got the phone call directly from Dwayne Fox saying that it was not gonna fly.
And we've worked, and we've worked very hard to try to, to talk to the Fire Marshal's Office to see how we can mitigate this. And I, and I believe the, the four additional items, and some of them were already built in, because the building's gonna be steel and concrete with some of the fireproofing and other material being used. The stand pipes over in the stairwells, an extra fire exit door that leads out to Route 1, vents actually in the third floor, ceiling was another option that we put in for mitigation. And then there was one more item that was added when, when Dave Naples and Morgan suggested it the other day before I signed off on it. Did I, did I miss anything, Morgan?
No, you got it, you got it perfectly right. The only other thing that we had to verify with this submission is they wanna make sure that that multipurpose room, council chambers, seats less than 50 occupants, which is an assembly threshold, which would throw you into a 50% fire lane access requirement. So, we've done that calculation four different ways to show that the seating, excuse me, the seating layout would, at worst-case scenario, be 49 or less occupants.
Any questions, counsel, before I jump down a rabbit hole? Morgan, there's no other way to say it. I'm disappointed. I'm very disappointed. I don't consider the high-power lines an immaterial thing. I believe that is a complete miss on the process, given the Fire Marshal. And what I don't hear is a, is a backup plan. What are we gonna do if the Fire Marshal comes back and says that we, that we can't have town hall where we thought it was going to be? And so, based upon these assumptions, why we hired GMB to begin with? So, what's our backup plan?
Well, we talked about some of the backup plans with Dave Naples and the town manager prior to that, and that was actually discussed with Dwayne Fox on the call as well. Those were items that I don't necessarily think the town wanted to consider, but they included eliminating a portion of the third floor, which Dwayne seemed like he would accept, or even getting rid of the EMS station altogether, which is the residential portion of that, which is why he's the most concerned about that, because there's people sleeping in this building. And I, I, you know, I, I completely agree with you. I, I'm, I'm sorry that you're disheartened, as are we, because we felt like we did our due diligence. But I wanted to remind you that when we were contracted to do the design, we never had the EMS portion as a part of the design until well after, and we have included that as a part of our design now. That doesn't change the fact of we are where we are. But we obviously have gotten ourselves into a position where this site is so packed. I mean, it is, I mean, it, every nook and cranny is being used for the program that the town needs, as well as this EMS portion of the building that needs to satisfy the county's requirement, that there's really not any other alternative for a worst-case scenario, other than those two, two items that I mentioned.
So, my understanding is that the EMS unit has nothing to do with the high-power lines?
Actually, the, the requirement that, for the fire lane access that we had several conversations with, with our civil engineer, was that Dwayne was very worried about the fact that this, that there's sleeping people, there's sleeping quarters for the EMS in, inside the building. So, that was taking his level of critique to a higher standard, because obviously, the life safety from his perspective is at a higher standard if there's people sleeping in the building.
I have a question. Why, why can't we just make the EMS a separate building?
So...
We certainly could, but it wouldn't, it would not be able to be on the same site.
Why?
Well, Dave Naples did, did a great job at looking at the code for that. I've, I kind of was a little bit worried about that. The code does allow, in the fires code, does allow that if you make that two-hour separation between the two separate buildings, it actually separates the buildings, which we brought to the Fire Marshal's attention. Again, Dwayne Fox is not saying, he said no, if it's close enough or even touching, that he considers it all one building.
I'm just saying, make it a separate building. We control the zoning code, so why not just make it a separate building on the site?
So, we talked about that. We talked about, there were, there were a couple of different options if we got down to this point. One was removal completely of the Sallyport, the EMS building altogether, and just build the town hall and police station on the site, and then have like a garage in the back. We, we talked about that. And we really want the EMS to be part of our, our program here in Dewey Beach. We think it's a huge safety issue for this side of the county. Then we looked at, Jim Deeds and I talked about, you know, we build phase one, and then when we're ready, we build phase two, and we build it as a separate, completely separate building, as you're, as you're suggesting. I mean, that's something that, that we can look at. I don't know what Morgan, when we looked at the, the amount of space, what it comes down to is, EMS folks have two bunk rooms in their, in their area, because during certain times, their shifts, they do require sleep. You have a male and female bunk room. I talked to the paramedics in the EMS about possibly removing that. Do they really need to have designated sleep areas? And they said all their, their buildings do, wherever they've been set up throughout the county. So, we're, we're not gonna remove that with, with that part of the, the second phase, I call it, of the building. Morgan, I don't know if you want to add anything about making it a completely separate building, and what the fire lane would look like for that in the, in the south end of the building?
Yeah. So, the, the fire lane depth has to be 24 feet wide, essentially. So, if you make that, extend that across, you know, and make that essentially go through to the, the north property line, that would make a separate building for a garage non-feasible, if that makes sense, to, to make it that small, because you would still have to have the fire lane access for their truck to get all the way to the north property line. So, it, we, we did look at it, but it, it was looking like it was gonna be a complete 100% redesign if we had to do that.
Thank you for the update. There's nothing we can do at this point in time until we hear back from the Fire Marshal?
That's correct. And, and there are, and Mr. Mayor, there are incidents, from what I understand, from talking to GMB and with our Dave Naples from CSI, where the Fire Marshal does accept the mitigation proposal by, by the builder in the, in the municipality. It's just not, they have to review it, and they have to look at it, and they may accept some of it, and they may not. There is a, a process we could go through where we appeal it, correct, Morgan?
Yes, that's correct. We have given, you know, the, we're happy to provide the letter that we have, but we have increased the life safety of the building in five other ways to mitigate this. And we are, we have 16% of the fire lane now. So, with the conversation that we've had with Dave Naples jointly with our civil engineer, we don't think that this is an alternate that could easily be rejected. They may come back, obviously, just like they would come back normally and have comments when they review the submittal, which we would fully, you know, expect. But I think that this is doable, and in something that is, most of which are already considered. I actually even put in the letter that we are already fire rating the exterior north facade wall also, which is also an increase in life safety for the inhabitants of the building, which is not required by the fire, by the Fire Marshal, but only required by the building code. So, all of these things put together, we think jointly more than mitigate our lack of fire lane percentage. But, you know, obviously, they are gonna do the review. The gentleman's name that will be reviewing it is Bill Kelly. They get a recommendation from Dwayne Fox. So, a lot of the things on the phone that Dwayne Fox presented were, were his suggestions, which we've incorporated, as well as Dave Naples and ours. So, we're, we're pretty confident that this, this can be accepted, and we won't ha, you know, have to go through a worst-case scenario situation.
All right. We'll cross that bridge when we get there, when we have more information. All right. Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you, Morgan.
Sure.
Number six, discuss a possible vote on ordinance to amend Chapter 173 of the code to revise the penalties for... to revise the penalties for improper removal of trees. Commissioner Persson, you want to give us a little bit of an overview?
Yes. Last April, we made some pretty significant changes in the section of the code that governs removal of trees. And we made some clarifications to ensure the property owners hopefully will understand that if you want to take down a tree that's 20 inches or more in circumference, you have to have a permit from the town building official in order to do so. And even after you get that permit, there is a requirement that that tree be replaced with a tree that's of appropriate species and is of appropriate size. If you take down a tree without a permit, there are substantial penalties associated with that as we built that into the ordinance last April. Or if you fail to replace a tree as required within the required period of time, which is generally 90 days, there are also substantial penalties associated with that. The penalty that we put in there initially was, this is $3,000, and it could increase, you know, if there isn't compliance with paying the penalty as well as replacing the tree. The, as we were considering some possible amendments to sections of our town charter that govern the maximum fine that could be leveled by, levied by the alderman, we realized that the alderman is limited to $1,000, and yet now we have potential fines here that exceed that. And I believe the town encountered a specific circumstance where they tried to levy a fine of $3,000 against the property owner, and there was a challenge to that. And I believe they had to reduce that back to the minimum that was allowed by the alderman. So we talked a little bit about what a potential strategy might be for continuing to keep pressure on property owners to help us preserve the tree cover here in Dewey Beach. So the idea here is that we're amending, proposing to amend the section of the code dealing with violations of the tree ordinance so that we would levy a fine of $1,000 for a violation. And if the violation is not satisfied within 30 days, we would level a second $1,000 fine. And we would continue to do so, the town would continue to do so, levying a new fine of $1,000 for each successive 30-day period until that violation is cured. So that's the basic strategy that is in this proposed amendment. I think it actually maybe enhanced the strength of the ordinance in terms of getting compliance. And it would remind everybody that any unpaid fines for violations of the chapter have to be satisfied before a property owner could get any future licenses or permits for that same property. So I think that is something, we built that into the code last year. It remains in the violation section, but I think that also helps strengthen it as well. So if there are any questions?
I did have a question. It may have been in another section of the code. But didn't we also agree when we voted on this that there was a cap in terms of how expensive the tree would be? Like we talked about, people got a really big tree, that, you know, sometimes you can't tell them that they have to buy a $100,000 tree.
Yes, we did. The replacement tree must be the largest size commercially available under $5,000.
Okay, and it's just another part of the code?
It is something that we added last April, but we are not amending it, not proposing to amend it.
It's 173-3-C.
Right.
And just as a clarification up to you, the tree expert. But if I'm a property owner and I take down a tree, what's the timeframe that I have to put the replacement tree before a penalty would?
It's generally 90 days.
90 days from the initial construction.
It would depend what type of season it is. So if you're doing your demo during the winter and you're taking your tree down, you may wait a little bit longer. And that's something that the building official will actually write out and say, when you get your permit to take a tree down, the building official will say you have until this date because we want the tree to be planted and survive.
Because that starts the timeline on the penalties, penalty for penalties. Okay, all right. Any public comment? Any questions? Have a motion.
A motion to approve?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous. Number seven, review of March financials. The financial statements were put, at least the summary was put out there on the internet at our town site. March financials also represent the year-end financials. So they are obviously in draft. But I think the summary gives us a pretty good indication of how well we did with this year ending March 31, 2024. But I expect that in May or June, depending upon the audit process, we'll actually go through the finalized numbers for the year and be able to review them. But if, once Ms. Hall has those, you know, we can put them on the, put the March financial statements on the website and also disseminate it to the rest of the council. Any questions from Ms. Hall on the review of the financial statements?
Yeah, unfortunately, I didn't put the financials in my folder where I keep all the media materials, so I'm going to pull it up now. But I, in the second page of the attachment here, it's pretty clear where the available surplus total comes from. And there is a need to satisfy the rainy day fund requirements, and that's basically 50% of the operating expenditures that we approved in March, I believe it was. My question is about the unassigned fund because there's a requirement there that that be funded at 15% of operating expenditures. And as I recall, throughout the year, that was somewhat increasing total over time. Is that unassigned fund essentially where the surplus lives? Or is it somewhere else? Or what am I missing here?
That's one of the benefits of the fund balance policy, which the mayor says we'll discuss later. The, right now, the excess is just sitting in your net income in private sector terms. It's, that number is finalized after the audit for the year because the way your fund balance policy is written, everything goes in and out of your unassigned. And so it's higher right now, but it's got to go down to meet some of the other requirements. And I was just trying to get you your rainy day and the capital expenditures finalized for right now because the rainy day is your main thing we're worried about. And the capital expenditures because certain people like to need to buy stuff.
You mentioned the capital expenditures. I did have a question about that. I can't, I don't understand where the numbers come from. The current balance may be the thing that maybe I do understand because I think that's, looks like approximately the balance I've seen in the most recent.
Right, the $160,000.
I don't know where the $296,000 comes from. That's.
Well, in the budget, we had had the two E vehicles we thought were going to be purchased in this fiscal year. They ended up being purchased in the last fiscal year. So right after the approval of the budget, there's a need to do an amendment for that. But what we did, what I did is I took the expenditures for this year, which is $6,000 for a dump insert, $45,000 for cameras for the vehicles, $45,000 for the CAD system, and $75,000 for another vehicle. And it's about $10,000 for any possible repairs for this town hall. And then the mayor had wanted us to be able to fund for two years.
Capital expenditures.
For the capital expenditures. I couldn't quite get that off of just what is sitting in the unaudited net income. So I just got us enough to get us this year and a little bit extra. Once the audit is completed, that'll get fully funded. Your unassigned will be fully. I cannot talk to Allison until Tuesday because right now seems tax season is.
Monday.
Yeah. She's not speaking to anybody.
Taxes are due Monday.
Yeah. Yeah, she's not speaking to anybody right now. So I can't get some questions answered.
So the way the accounting system works that we have is that the net income closes into retained earnings, where for us would be unassigned. So once it closes in March, then you unassign.
Okay, I'm still confused by the capital expenditures and what we approved and didn't approve. I just think we're going to need to revisit that. So we need to spend a lot more time on today.
I would like, yeah, I would like us to spend time going through each of the, like, when we do the allocations and when the audit is complete into the various funds where they are, do we have sufficient coverage for the purchases that we're going to have, even given some grants that we've received so that we can cover our operations?
If I recall, I thought that, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that there was a budget and finance recommendation that excess funds go to the town hall.
Town hall, correct.
That, after.
After everything else gets allocated.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
If we build a town hall.
If we build a town hall. I know, okay. Any others?
No, that's all. I don't want to take any more time.
All right. All right, with that, we are going to go into executive session to convene. So let's take a break.
So we could make a motion in accordance with the.
So can I have a motion to go into executive session on? Yeah.
Do you have to read the whole thing?
Yeah.
Hold on a second.
I'll read the whole thing. Why not? I can read.
Pursuant to 1,004 Delaware Code, charted sections including legal action and opinion of the misreading of law respect to collective bargaining or penalty litigation, we motion that we go into executive session.
From, just a matter of process, we're going to go into executive session of second.
Second.
Who was the second?
Elizabeth.
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 Kate, are we going to keep the Zoom going? Are we going to shut it down, do a separate Zoom, and come back in?
Separate Zoom.
I think this is going to be at least 30 minutes.
Yeah, we're going to shut everything down. And then we will restart when we're finished. We will be live again.
Okay, sounds good. Do you want a specific, you want to say we'll be back in an hour? You want to say we're back in 45 minutes? And then we may not, or we may want to come back?
I think we've got a hard stop.
I'm sorry?
We've got a hard stop on the clock.
At 6:00? Well, let's.
I'd say half hour.
Let's, 5:30, we will, at 5:30, we will reconvene.
So that's just courtesy to the public who might want to be here to witness.